Prayer?
I'm gonna ask, uh, Bill White to say a prayer for us.
Heavenly Father, we call your precious name this morning, thanking you for another day, a day that we've never seen before. Lord, Father God, we just pray that you be with us this morning as we discuss the issues that are facing this court this morning. We pray that you touch the hearts of each and everyone that's making the decision that it would be done in your sight in the right manner and that it will benefit the citizens of Newton County. Lord, we thank you for life, health, and strength, and we praise blessing your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Today is Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it's nine oh three a.m. I'm gonna call the meeting in order. We do have a court. I'd like to acknowledge all the guests here, uh, open it up for public hearing. Mr. Mark Norton, you're ready to.
I'm ready. No, uh, thank you for recognizing me today. A couple of things I want to touch on today. Number one, uh, is recently brought to my attention that the court did have some discussion over a PO system implemented in the county. I'll tell you what, gentlemen, I think that's a fantastic idea. Uh, for many years, and I mean many years, not just four or five, and I've talked to probably more individuals in this county than any time. Ain't bragging at this time. And I think a lot of y'all know that. People in Newton County have questions of spending, they have questions where their money goes, they have all kind of rumors. We've heard it all. Y'all heard it all. So there's, you know, no need to go into that. But even up to date, county is facing some lawsuits and et cetera over spending and information, and all that yam-yam goes back to one deal, spending. If we had a purchase order system in place, which we desperately need, we would be facing a lot of the issues we are facing today had we had that in place actually years ago. It'd be cut right there. There it is. No big deal. The judges in the past, court in the past, and I mean go back as many years as you want to go back. I'm not saying four or five, go back eight or ten, well, those questions have a rope. Put in a purchase order system. It eliminates all that yam-yam, all that stuff that we're going through. And I know Mr. Powell has been in an environment where a PO system was in place. Mr. White, I know your background. You have definitely been in a position, you know, importance of a PO system. You've been, done very important. I encourage you to help track the money, to cut out amongst the yam-yam that is going on in the county, all money, spending, where it's going, et cetera. Put in a PO system. Let's get up to speed. Another thing I'd like to ask, and I'm very, I'm kind of puzzled by it. I don't expect an answer today. I mean, I can never get an answer, but it's brought to my attention that, uh, sometime back this court voted to not allow an individual to spend X amount of dollars. That's the little understanding that I have of it. So, but yet that individual chose to spend that money anyway. So what, what authority does this court have if some, y'all vote against something and an individual does it anyway? Whether it be me or one of y'all. I mean, what's the legality here? That's what I'm confused about. I mean, we have a district attorney's office. We've got three people over there. And I would think this court would have some clue of the law that applied on y'all's decision. If not, then hey, you come in here, I propose something, you propose something, it doesn't go your way, fine, I'll do it anyway. What they gonna do about it? I'll just do what I want to do. They gonna do nothing about it. That's how it looks. And I think most of you know what I'm talking about. Anyway, there we are. That's it. Thank you so much for your time and your here. Everyone have a blessed day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Norton. Uh, is there anybody else signed up? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Uh, we'll go in and deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is approved contract between American National Leasing and Newton County for purchase of a twenty twenty-four F- one fifty for the sheriff's office. All right, this is the, uh, the truck was ordered last year. All right, it came in, they'd sent the lease agreement by DocuSign. Uh, they're sending another paper copy, but we printed out the DocuSign. I just need approval to sign the lease agreement. Did you bring the, uh, we have the lease agreement for the vehicle. Uh, it just needs a court approval to sign it.
The lease agreement is for thirty-three thousand. The total, uh, purchase price was sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and six. Um, we paid a down payment of thirty-five thousand dollars on this, and we've agreed to pay thirty-five thousand dollars out. Actual payment will begin, the first payment will be on twelve, nine, and twenty-five for twelve thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars in a year for three years. The thirty-five thousand, uh, due date that's gonna come out will be S B twenty-two for the sheriff's office.
Yes.
For this year. And we have to have this done and in place by the end of the year so that it can be put on the S B twenty-two.
So I need a motion to approve the contract between American National Leasing and Newton County for the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Ford F- one fifty.
That's coming out of S B, right?
The thirty-five thousand is coming out of.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor? All against. All right, item number two. Um, is approved appointment of Sheriff Robert Burberry as Constable of Precinct Two effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Now, I, I have proposed appointing a current sheriff. Uh, the Council of Precinct Two resigned in November. Uh, he moved out of county. So I propose appointing Sheriff Burberry, uh, to Constable of Precinct Two effective January the first to fill that position. Sheriff, would you like to say?
Oh, hey, yeah, uh, yeah, I was asking third, and my DNA is all about purpose. And, uh, it is something that, uh, that I feel I can help the county every day. And, uh, it's gonna be like businesses, civil papers and everything. I live in that precinct, obviously. And, uh, I just feel it's a win-win situation. So, and, uh, I'm looking forward to it. So.
That's it, my precinct. Now, we're gonna have high expectations, your word.
Well, I'm a grown-up. It's all about, uh, you know, I talked about this yesterday on the radio. It's all about getting people involved in their community. We cannot, law courts can't do it, my stuff. We need you now. And we need you to talk to us instead of about us. Uh, because, you know, obviously, uh, I'm not gonna be funny. Uh, there are so many cases out there that we work every day. We know that you've seen somebody, but yet you say somebody said, uh, somebody said, you telling us what you thought. I can't prove that, and I can't go get a warrant for that. I need you to come on the eye, take responsibility, the accountant, try to push this place forward and get rid of these knuckles there who continue to prey on you and bury your place. So, because if they don't get any repercussion from doing it, uh, they're gonna keep doing it, and criminal behavior escalates. Another thing, when you sit there and commit this to happen, you promoting that, and they gonna say, wow, I can do anything I want because that ain't gonna say anything. You told them to prove to that. Yeah, it's okay. We're not saying anything. I can't get my horns around there. We can't get our horns around there. And it's very frustrating, and that's why, you know, I'm gonna stand and fight. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. So I'm gonna make the motion to approve appointment of, uh, Sheriff Burberry as Constable of Precinct Two effective January the first.
So, so Judge, before we go through this, tell the court a little bit about your selection process for this vacancy.
Okay, there was, uh, in Precinct Two, there's three, uh, I find three certified peace officers. Um, two of them worked for the school district. One of them already was constable, uh, and he resigned. Uh, so, uh, the other one wasn't interested. Uh, well, I didn't even talk to him because they were working for the school district. Uh, so, uh, I talked to Colton, uh, asked him if he would have any issues, and he thought it was a great idea. A corner or phone conversation, and I was kind of apprehensive about asking the sheriff, you know, because I felt like, you know, he might think he was, you know, but, you know, I did, I asked him, and he come back later and gave me the answer, yes. That's, that's how I come about, you can see, you know, the, the the peace officers that are already certified in Precinct Two, uh, and I did feel like Sheriff Burberry was the best choice.
This is only for two years to the next upcoming election, correct?
Uh, I thought it was gonna be till, now KK, you can.
It'll be the, the next general election, so which will be in twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner White, that's your precinct.
Yes, I think it's a good fit, uh, simply because of the fact that, uh, uh, the new, the incoming sheriff and he have a good relationship and rapport and know what's going on already. Uh, the criminal activity that's already taking place right now, they can continue to pursue it, and, uh, and, uh, they work together good, and the sheriff thinks it's a good fit. Well, I have no reason to doubt it. Think the people support that as well? I think so.
So that being said, I second the motion, the motion that the judge has, has made to, uh, act, uh, to appoint Robert Burberry as Constable of Precinct Two.
Okay, I made the motion, uh, Commissioner White, second. All in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right, I abstained from voting on it. Respect the precinct two commissioner. All right. Item number three is authorize county judge to issue a written request to each Newton County Emergency Services District for a written report no later than February first, twenty twenty-five regarding the district's budget, tax rate, and debt service for the preceding fiscal year for Texas Health and Safety Code seven, seven, five dot zero, three, six. All right, that's just, uh, authorizing the court to, uh, send each emergency services district a written request, uh, for the, for what they have to do to comply with the state.
Hey Judge, this is Misty. Yeah, this is in furtherance of our endeavors to have all the E S Ds meet all of the requirements that they need to under Texas law, and so this is just another step in that.
Yes, ma'am. So, I don't quite understand as it says for the preceding fiscal year. So is this a request for what's going to be spent in two thousand and twenty-five or what was spent in two thousand and twenty-four?
It'll be twenty twenty-four. They'll be reporting on twenty twenty-four.
Unlikely.
Okay, so.
Year-end closeout.
So it's a year-end closeout, and, and you instructed or you informed all the E S Ds that they would be audited last year, I mean, in this year. I mean, in two thousand and twenty-four, when you met with all of us, you informed them they would be audited. So this will be something that accompanies that audit. Is that correct?
Right, it'll be, uh, in addition to that. It's just the, the furtherance of it. It's just another step in it, yeah.
Okay, I was thinking it was, when, when we had that discussion, I thought that we requested in December of this year for their budget for next year. That's what threw me off, but it's not.
Gotcha. Right, that's, so that language of the, um, agenda item is straight from the code.
Okay.
Right, so Misty, the report that they're, uh, turning in is gonna be for twenty twenty-four, but the budget actually will be for twenty twenty-five, correct?
I would think they, so, so with this action item, like I said, it came straight from the code, and this is what we send the written request, and this is exactly what we can ask for. But at the same time, I do believe we can ask them to come and present their twenty twenty-five budget. I don't think that's a, an issue at all.
So that's, that's the way I understood it. What you just said is, is the way for the court, just like we post our budget, you know, for the general public, it's the way for the court to look at the budget of the E S D.
Yes.
So if we made the motion, and let me ask you, Misty, could we make the motion to authorize the judge to issue the written request for the E S D's budget, tax rate, and debt service for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four and the upcoming year of twenty twenty-five?
Sure, yeah.
That's my motion.
Sure.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right. Item number four, discuss and approve relocating the office of Justice of the Peace, Precinct Three, to three twelve Davidson Street in Newton. And, um.
Your honor, I would take up a motion on that. I would suggest changing it to Water Block, uh, but Jackson to three twelve Davidson Street in Newton, because I believe the official mailing address might be something different.
Okay.
So if you do have a motion on that, I would change it to that. Water Block is just.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
And my apologies, my apologies for that, uh, typo on the agenda item. Uh, I was doing it very quickly, but our lease agreement actually, uh, which is the next item, it actually does reflect the six fifteen main. So sorry about that.
Okay, and in that, uh, moving, the plan is to move the Agriculture and Station Office when Newton County gets agent to the Davidson Street location where the Auditor's Office used to be last year. Uh, we have an empty building there, uh, and if we move the Precinct Three J P's office, which, uh, the, uh, J P, the J P has to move his office, uh, to his own building, and, you know, I told him, you know, the county wouldn't pay rent. Uh, you know, that we would pay the utilities, that's it, you know. So the lease agreement is, says one dollar per year for the building. Now, once the J P's office and the Agriculture's office is moved, I can cut the internet off to the building. What is the internet for?
Seven hundred dollars a month.
So it's a net, net savings for the county, you know, just, uh, eliminating the internet, high-speed internet for the old hospital.
Are you gonna do anything with, are you originally gonna move everybody out eventually, right?
Eventually, everybody's gonna move out of the old hospital. Now, once the new building's built, the, the nutrition center will move to the new building. So that would only leave, uh, Ms. Margaret with the clothes closet, uh, and the food bank. And I'm gonna move him too.
Amen.
The veteran service officer.
He's going to base mine, correct?
Yes, that's the plan right now.
So Judge, and I don't know when it was sent. I seen the contract this week. I'm thinking it was sent this week. Is that right, Misty?
That's correct. It was sent, so what is today? Today's Wednesday. I sent it Monday.
Okay, so in that contract, there was, there was some requirements of the tenant, and then some requirements of what we saw. In the tenant, I saw something that concerned me. It was a clause about the tenant would provide the required liability insurance. Do we, do we know what that cost will be? Now, I'm, Misty, I'm, I'm looking at the phone. I'm sorry. I'm asking you. I mean, am I reading?
Okay, okay.
Did I read that wrong?
No, 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 yeah. So what we had in there was for the county to, uh, pay, uh, provide insurance for any of the county contents and also the premises liability for our envites. Um, I asked Courtney Lott to check on that. They did come back with, here's what, uh, we would suggest, uh, but I don't remember seeing a price. Is Courtney Lott there?
Yes, ma'am. It says two thousand dollars in the body of the email.
It says two thousand, but it also get, get much lower deductibles under the contents, under the V O P. Uh.
Right, he gave two different options, but the, the cheapest option was the two thousand, right?
And that's two thousand a year or a month?
Pay in that email. Did you see where it said?
No, it doesn't say. It's, it's not gonna be a month.
See, we pay four hundred and fifty thousand a year. You know it's not gonna be a month?
Well, you know, before we vote on it. Additionally to, uh, you know, once, once all the county employees are out of the old hospital, I plan on dropping insurance on it.
Right.
So that's a saving to.
So the quote should be an annual quote.
Yes. So it is an annual quote?
It should be. I mean, I'm not looking at it right now.
That's, that's the way I took it, annual quote.
It shouldn't, the quote should not be monthly, but I'm not looking at it right this minute.
So it's probably good if Judge Greer got in this conversation, because, because this morning I talked with him about it, and he reminded me of a conversation that he and I had when I made the comment. He, he'd asked me my thoughts about it, and he reminded me that I said it would be a small price to pay for the county to get the, evacuate that building, drop that insurance, and what have you. I just think that, you know, we have county offices, and before we, we need to know the absolute cost for sure, and then vote on it as a court. I, I would say without that, I would be hesitant to go into a contractual agreement if we don't know if, if we get, yeah, I mean. yeah, I mean, if you could go to the end of the meeting, I mean, is, if that's agreeable with the court, the judge in the court, or if y'all ready to vote on it, vote on it.
He just, I mean, what's contents, um, Judge, what do you have as far as contents that belongs to the county in your office now?
In my office, you have two computers.
Computers.
Finish my sentence.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I want to do that.
I'm on it, oh, but, 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 don't make it work, uh, two computers, you got four, five filing cabinets, one desk and two ch- chairs, everything else in there either belongs to me or my system, that's all the county owns that's in my office.
So as far as insuring the contents, we really don't care to insure the contents at all, all we care about is the liability if somebody gets hurt on the property, right? That's all the insurance.
That's fair, yeah. That's exactly my.
Place the content.
Yeah, yeah. So can we just, we don't want you to get any insurance and come back?
We can, well, we'll skip item number five too, um.
Patrick Men, uh, five hundred and six, seven, and possibly eight, take, uh, some legal possibility issues, take a better session before we come back out.
Okay, so, so we'd have to wait on Courtney right quick.
Yeah. You know, I. I think just a little bit about county offices, what I understand, and Misty and John are here, so, by the government code, as I understand it, the only county offices that can be seated outside, or can be, uh, yeah, can be, can be outside of the county seat are the commissioners and the JPs, is that correct?
Uh, two ninety-two, oh, oh, two, I believe lays out the exact offices that have to be in the county seat.
Right.
That's tax assessor, treasurer, uh.
All of them.
Yeah, all the other ones except for those two.
I think the only one I didn't see there was the county auditor, was, so.
Got some different club in your.
Well, and, and too, the, the code also states that, you know, the county doesn't have to provide office for cases less, if they do case, less than fifty cases a month, but we do have to provide them a courtroom, so, you know, if Mike moves out there, you know, he has, we have the courtroom downstairs that, that's available, so, now, in, in Dunville, we have the courtroom at the sub courthouse, so, um, precinct two and three, JP's, the, I know precinct one always, when they have the truancy cases, they come to the courtroom here.
And, and at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is be good stewards of the money and provide good services to the residents, right, I mean, that's what we're really trying to do, so what was the cost?
Two thousand dollars per year, and folks, he's a little bit high on that, he, he went to the higher side of the estimate, so.
So the total cost JP's office being at this location would be approximately, be less than five thousand, is that right?
Yes.
So Judge Greer, is that in the majority of your precinct right there versus somewhere else?
So I make a motion, we approve, uh, locating the office of Justice of the Peace Precinct Three, uh, to lot or block near three oh, three twelve Davidson Street in Newton, Texas. Second, was, was that okay, John?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, I made the motion, Commissioner Benson's second, all in favor?
Uh.
All against, all right. Item number five, discuss and approve lease agreement with Mike Greer for the JP office space located near lot or block three twelve Davidson Street in Newton, Texas. Okay, uh, I don't know, do y'all have it in your package for the lease agreement, but it's for a dollar a year?
Well, it was a contract we got sent, right?
Yes.
So just, the final, just one more time, we're looking at approximately two thousand dollars to, to use this office a year.
Yes.
So I need a motion to approve lease agreement, I'll make the motion that we approve the lease agreement as written by our county attorney, with the court's understanding being that the cost would be approximately two thousand dollars a year.
I second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Yeah.
Uh, all against? All right, item number six, discuss and consider adding a clause in section four point oh two of the employee handbook that permits newly elected officials to have job postings created and posted within thirty days prior of the new elected official start date. The intent of this line item is that newly elected officials can interview, select, hire current or potential employees on their first day of taking office.
Your Honor, as I said earlier, I, I asked the court if you want to executive session, if we can discuss possible liabilities, uh, in six, seven, maybe eight, before y'all take them off.
Okay, well, the court will go into executive session, or do we need a motion for that? I tell you what, we can go ahead and move down to paying the bills before we go into executive session, and that is, uh, it ain't got included, we're gonna discuss it in closed session.
We're not gonna vote on anything until everyone comes back in there.
All right, well, item number nine, do we have any budget amendments? Okay, all right, item number ten is payment of bills.
Your Honor, we're gonna change a little bit to reprove, um, you want to call the general agent, the days I have this, um, precinct three to general, I discussed it this morning, and we're gonna take that over from precinct three.
Does it matter for money?
General fine, two hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and forty-four cents, Dexter Battalion State Fund, forty dollars, Braden Bridge General, forty-one dollars and fifteen cents, Braden Bridge Precinct Three, seventeen hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-four cents, Braden Bridge Precinct Four, sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, Commissioner's Special Precinct One, three thousand, three hundred thirty dollars and twenty-two cents, Commissioner's Special Precinct Two, twenty-one thousand, five hundred ninety dollars and sixty-nine cents, Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, eight thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents, Commissioner's Special Precinct Four, one thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents, record preservation, two hundred dollars, solid waste disposal, four thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-five cents, Newton County Library, one thousand, two hundred, eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, grants, two thousand, seven dollars and seventeen cents, and technology, five hundred fifty dollars and ten cents, so the total of all fines, two, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars and two cents.
Can we say?
Uh, two hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars.
So will the changes be on the one we signed?
Yes.
Or they've already been made on the one we're gonna sign? So I'll make the motion that we approve the bills as they were read by the county auditor.
Motion made by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right, now we will go into executive session.
Is everybody back in? All right, courts back in session from, all right, we'll move to item number six. Discuss and consider adding clause to the section four point O two of the employee handbook that permits newly elected officials to have job posting created and posted within thirty days prior to the newly selected official start date. The intent of this line item is that newly elected officials can interview select higher current or potential employees on the first day of taking office. And I'm gonna recommend the court take no action due to our, our legal counsel. An elected official.
All right, according to the constitution of the state of Texas, any official duties, the elected official has to be administered the upper office prior to conducting any official duties or power in that office. And I believe this would go contrary to the actual constitution.
Okay, well, thank you, John. I'm gonna make a motion that we take no action on item number six. All right, motion by me. Say goodbye commercial Benson, all in favor? All against? All right. Item number seven. Discuss and consider removing a clause in section ten dot ten of the employee handbook found with its prohibited acts that states a prohibited act to be in possession of a weapon while on county property or county business.
I'm gonna make the motion that we immediately remove the possession of weapon while on county property or while on county business from the prohibited acts of employee handbook. Such attention.
Motion made by Commissioner Powell. And, you know, we need to add to that motion too that as long as they follow state and federal guidelines.
Well, I don't know that you can.
Thank you for adding that in there because if you do away with that one line item in the policy handbook, regardless, you're still under state and federal guidelines regarding guns and the possession where you can and where you cannot possess a gun. As far as the county buildings are concerned, there are state and federal laws that dictate courthouses and things of that nature. So if you take that out of them out, all it does is take it out of our policy. Each individual office can have their own policy. But the individual is still under state and federal guidelines concerning any guns. Possession, use, access, all of it. So by doing that, you don't need to have any other language. Just everybody should know that even though that's taken out, you're still under state and federal guidelines for possession of weapons.
Okay, and they should know that regardless of the employee handbook.
Yes, regardless of the employee handbook.
Whether you're an employee or not, you're under those.
Yes, you're under the state regulations.
Okay, and if you do protect yourself, so you don't motorrad or protect yourself with this being in place, does that be against you?
We're basically, we're protecting our employees by removing this is what we're doing.
I second that motion.
All right. Motion made by me. Second by Commissioner Spencer, all in favor? All against? All right, item number eight. Discuss and consider taking action to create a person agent position and system within the county auditor's office. The position and system shall be created and operational within the first quarter of twenty twenty five. The position will not initially add additional staffing. Additional staffing needs will be evaluated ninety days after position has been established and operational.
So I was hoping the auditor was thinking in here, but, uh, so I'm just, I'm just requesting that we work with the county auditor to establish a P O system. I talked with her about it. I don't know if somebody can get her up here, but she said that her office would take it on and wouldn't require any more staffing. You know, and if they just become overwhelmed, they'd come back to the court and it'd be a court decision, but after a lot of discussions, she said that she felt like it may end up helping her office. But again, it's that no additional staffing initially at least, and any additional staffing would have to be approved by the court. Now, one of the things she said, you know, she because she called me when she's saying this, um, was the how long it would take to get it put in? And she's saying that she needs to update, go to a, the newer version of Net Data. I don't know, not gonna get in her world. And she would want to do that first, but I just, I'm a, I'm a firm believer we need a P O system that.
I think with the, with the, you know, there's already a system in Net Data. And I've been going through it. And it's kind of archaic, but if we update the new, uh, and then provide them with some training from I three verticals, which now owns Net Data, uh, I think it'll work.
And we could get into.
I think it'd be more simple than what they tried before.
We could get into the details of, you know, the limits and how it all works at a later date, you know, whatever that limit is. Get somebody working on it. That's, that's just my proposal. create a purchase order system through the auditor's office. Try to have it implemented within the next ninety days with no additional staff being added.
That's my statement. We got, I have one already. I don't see no need.
Well, I'll second the motion. So motion made by Commissioner Powell. Seconded by me. All in favor? All against?
I'm not opposed to the purchasing system, but we need to make sure we all understand the fact that every department head has a budget. Like we've been doing good staying within our budget except for judge's office, which has the general funds. That's where the issue is. That's where I think the focus is really needed. So we'll have to set some guidelines, like you said, so that we won't be double working hours sales. For same call, just for the sake of, I think that we will definitely have.
The biggest issue has been air conditioning maintenance, you know, the courthouse maintenance. There'll be water damage to the courtroom. That, that's been the, that's been the, uh, that and air conditions has been the biggest issue for the county in twenty twenty four.
And, and I go back to. well, I'm not gonna repeat what I've said once, but I guess if, if we vote this in, you know, I, I know Commissioner Benson's stance on it. I respect his stance as commissioner. Uh, the concern I have is if we voted in for the county, it's just like the in county employee handbook, it's countywide. It doesn't, it doesn't ex- exclude precinct one because you voted against it. And I think that uh maybe before we go that far, we have a workshop with our county attorney's office and talk about all the things we're talking about now. So I'll, if it's pleasing with the court, I will draw my proposal and propose that we have a workshop to discuss this line item and work some details out to help everyone feel better about it and state our concerns or, or what have you, and then implement it. Can I do that?
Yes.
Does that make you feel better, Commissioner Benson?
Hey, I, I'm in one vote.
Right.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Eric, did you want to say something?
Um, item number seven, I have something for, so I could take that out of the.
Yes, yeah.
Have one.
Yes, we're gonna get uh missing John to work something out.
Well, it just, so that needs to be removed immediately. So uh an email from the judge's office saying strike that line item would suffice, right? Cause it's in the minute.
It would be, be updated as of today.
Yeah. That would probably help everyone in the room that works for the county be legal today.
I'll see how that's it, cause we'll have to go ahead and change it.
I understand it's still under state guidelines.
Whether you work for the county or not?
Yes.
Alright, back.
Go in there and get it changed when I get that. I'll take that out. And then I'll have to bring it back to court because I'll have to sign it. We all approve that.
Okay.
Alright, back to item number eight. Uh, Richard Powell has requested to withdraw uh his item uh and seconded by Commissioner White, all in favor?
So, so before we do that, Judge, can you help us with that, John?
Motion made, it was second.
Oh, the second was that he had gone.
No, we, we, Judge seconded.
Well, yeah, second, we have both shown.
Yeah. No, we didn't, no.
He don't want it to say nothing. I said.
There was a call for a vote, and I know.
It's two against one start with, and he didn't vote until he all got the call.
Tell me what.
Um, Richard Powell, he had made the motion, judge said he um had the vote. Precinct one would begin in.
So it passes by means of two to one. It's a majority of votes in quorum. Actual vote.
So it, the, so it's still open. Commissioner White has not voted one way or the other, right?
No, he's sworn with it, there it be.
Well, he didn't abstain. He just hasn't made his mind up, correct?
But then it's still open.
Yeah.
So here it is with five.
Um. So going forward, how do, can we go forward with him withdrawing his agenda request?
Can't, we can't go back and undo the motion, the second and the actual votes that have already been touted.
I vote no.
I vote no. So it's two to two, and it fails for lack of majority. Now, doesn't mean y'all can't retake this issue up, have a workshop, and go back and revisit it and maybe reword the motion to fit whatever the workshop comes out.
So.
And go through it again.
So along these lines, we can just request that the judge schedules a workshop after the first year.
Yeah.
Soon, after the first year to where we can work with our county auditor's office, county treasurer's office in a workshop and come up with something that works for the county.
And out of that workshop, come up with a motion that'll.
Okay.
Say y'all can agree.
I, I, I feel good about that. I think that's a step in the right direction.
So. So now we've got everything.
What number?
Okay.
Two to two. Two to two. So with that being said, we finished everything up. I need the motion from the left side of the table.
I like the vote. We adjourned.
Motion made by Commissioner Benson, second by Commissioner White that we adjourned, all in favor?
Uh.
Alright.
All against?
How is yet?
So we uh, we're gonna try and get together before the end of January.
Well, yeah, I think if I have.
Right, yeah, we all. You know, I just. That can be an eye.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and add that to it.
Man, that's a good, that's a.
You got me in the heart of the town.
Yeah. It's hand clean, ran it down my body's throat.
Right.
Thank you.
Alright, let's go to work. We try.
Again.
We try.
I said, we try to get that passed, so we really need it. You do what work you, you know, that, as you do on.
I'm too.
What's your point?
In this next hour, two to one.
I'm waiting to hear the name of the office. I got all, is there anything? So.
I just. I hate to.
When we did. Uh.
There's a whole way to pick.
So.
That's.
And uh, so.
I've seen most of the way.
It, it would have approved that. And that's.
I'm sure that's regular.
This paper, three, three had a lot of, like seventeen.
And then.
Good luck, eh?
I can tell you. You don't know. All this price review.
I understand, I understand.
That was my next.
You know, I know.
Okay.
Two, what I want to do. So, and you know, we're gonna.
That's alright.
I can, the county auditor, yes. Share.
That'd be a bad start over.
Hey, real, hey.
I will.
Chris, now the sheriff's in the same boat, and she's in agreement with that.
Yeah.
So that's seven.
Okay.
That birthday, I'm gonna have a blessing come.
Blessings.
That's a lot.